Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 23rd, 2023 regular meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask our Commission Secretary, Andy Smith, if he's called to roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Lezak?
I'm here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Strongman?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner Needing and Chair Rizer are both absent tonight, but we do have a quorum with five.
Great, thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the consent calendar. We actually do have one item on the consent calendar. Would any Commissioner wish to pull this item for discussion? All right, seeing none, does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? I'm going to ask the Commission Secretary if there are members of the public online who would like to provide a comment.
And for anybody attending via Zoom, I would ask if you wish to provide comments on the consent item, please press the raise hand button to let us know. We're not seeing anybody, so we'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you. The Vice Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Doctor.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Commission Secretary, can you please record the vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, thank you. Next on our agenda is public communication. The public communication portion of the agenda is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Any members here in the chamber or online?
So I'd ask again if any members attending online on Zoom wish to speak on the general public comment for any items not on the agenda, please press the raise hand button now. Also, I'll note for everybody's benefit that, and this was included in the agenda, that there was a public comment provided from Kenji Yamada. It was early enough that we actually put it on the agenda, and it's a general comment that was submitted to the Transportation Commission, Planning Commission, and City Council regarding also regarding infrastructure, and it has been distributed to all of them. And I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom raising your hand.
Uh, great, thank you very much. All right, we'll move right along then. The next item on our agenda is public hearings, and I'd like to start by asking if any of the, that any members of the Commission have had any ex parte communications related to items on this agenda. Seeing only head shaking no, and I have none as well. So we'll move on to our first project, which is the Top Shop Auto Conditional Use Permit, application number Y22-108, at 1265 Parkside Drive, and I believe we're starting with
Technical difficulties, brought up the ground power plant.
The Community Development Department. This project before you is a request for a conditional use permit to do car sales at 1265 Parkside Drive in the Parkside Business Center. So the tenant space is noted on the screen by a red arrow, so you'll see that 1265 Parkside is situated toward the middle of the center and it's not facing a street. This site is in the commercial mixed-use district, which requires a conditional use permit for auto sales uses. This is a zoning designation that is meant to encourage a combination of ground-floor retail uses, which is similar to the intent of this general plan, land use designation, which is intended to encourage a combination of commercial and residential uses. This site is also within the north downtown specific plan area, and that plan allows and encourages a mix of uses, and specifically calls out auto uses as one of those uses. So the allowance for car sales use at this site will meet the retail intent of the MUC zone and the land use designation as well, and it will allow for a different type of auto-related business that'll be available to customers in this Parkside Center. So to summarize the business a bit, Top Shop Auto is an auto shop that builds, upfits, sells, and services vehicles. 1265 Parkside Drive will be utilized for the retrofitting and sale side of their business. Top Shop Auto focuses on customized vehicles and specializes in overland-bound vehicles. So those are vehicles that are built for on- and off-roading and can be used as exploration camping vehicles. So the showroom area that's noted on the floor plan on this slide will be used for restoration, repair, and maintenance of vehicles, as well as an online showroom. So it won't act as a typical showroom that we see in normal auto sales uses, where customers come and view vehicles on a regular basis. It will only be for the online showroom, and these cars will be custom, and so they're sold on an on-demand basis. And there will be no vehicle storage on the site and no vehicle repair is to occur outdoors. So that limits potential impacts to the adjacent neighbors and the tenants in terms of parking availability, as well as noise. And so because of this unique business model that Top Shop has, I mean, it's more compact sales, indoor repair only, no outdoor display or storage, the use is consistent with that MUC zone, the MUC land use designation, as well as that north downtown specification. So Top Shop Auto is planning to occupy three separate tenant spaces within the business park center, but this CUP request is only going to be for that 1265 Parkside Drive, which is outlined in the red there. The other two spaces that they have will be used for the service side of their business, as well as the storage. So in terms of CEQA, this project is exempt because it's only a minor change of an existing commercial tenant. And so staff recommends the Planning Commission move to adopt the resolution approving a conditional use permit to establish a car sales use at 1265 Parkside Drive. And so I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant and Top Shop Auto representatives are also here if you have any questions for them.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. Do we have any Commissioner questions? Mr. Strongman?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Since they're using three different spaces, I know this CUP is only for that specific space, but will there be any conflict with traffic with the other tenants of the complex, with people running back and forth between the three spaces?
My understanding is that they kind of work independently. So the 1285 Parkside, which is the closest to the street, that's going to be a standard auto repair, which takes over what was previously there, which is Morgan's Repair Machine or Rind Shop. So it'll be sim- very similar to that. And then in regards to that other tenant space they're using for storage, I don't think that there's going to be major storage there. It'll be small parts, so it shouldn't conflict with any access or maneuvering around.
Thank you. Also, will there be any hazardous waste and how will that be dealt with in the restoration?
Um, I believe Top Shop knows how to handle that. They can, they're more the experts on that, but you can ask that, I don't know specifically.
Okay, and one question that probably is more directed at them is, I'll ask you and then they could respond to it when they have time, is that they have a shop or facility in Lafayette, how is that different, if at all, between this, that Lafayette and here?
My understanding, they could correct me, but this is supposed to be in place of that, so they will no longer be operating that lot.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Do we have any other Commissioner questions? All right, seeing none, let's open the public hearing, and the applicant will now have fifteen minutes to present if they'd like or talk to us. Come on up.
This is Steve. I'm Frank.
Good evening, everybody, how are you? I'm Steve DeCesriss, Cardoza Properties, representing the ownership.
Frank Powell, Top Shop Auto. Been in business since 2014 in Lafayette. Very excited to be in Walnut Creek. And, and yes, we, we have all the proper hazardous waste facilities intact, and we'll be moving them into the front spot where Morgan Speed Marine was before, so, with our EPA and everything else that goes with that. So everything is handled through the shop in the front, as far as that question goes.
Okay, if you don't have any further formal presentation, which is fine, because I think Brittany did a great job.
The staff did, I mean.
As, as they do. So I think we had Mr. Strongman's questions answered already. Any other questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Okay, all right, so we're going to open it up to the public now, so if you want to sit down, you can, or you can stand there, whatever you want to do, we're flexible. Does any member of the public wish to provide public comment at this time for this agenda item?
And again, I would ask any, any members of the public attending via Zoom, if they would press the raise hand button if they wish to provide public comment on this item. And I'm not seeing any.
Okay, and I don't see anyone in the chamber either who wishes to comment on this at this time. All right, so seeing no additional speakers, I guess there's nothing to respond to on the part of the applicant, checking one last chance for additional information if you'd like.
Maybe you must have any questions you want to comment.
I think we're good, thank you. All right, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for comments, questions, or deliberation. Mr. Lezak?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, application number Y22-108, Top Shop Auto, 1265 Parkside Drive.
Second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. Commission Secretary, can you please record the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry, I did out of order. Mr. Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman, I've already recorded your vote. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ward?
Yes.
And motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so moving right along, our second project that we're going to consider is the residences at Abigail Place. It's a major subdivision, requested waivers and concession pursuant to the state density bonus law, design review, tree removal permit, and tree drip line encroachment permit, application number Y22-019, and the address is 730 and 748 Minor Road. And we're not having a staff presentation by chip, as my notes show, which are apparently incorrect.
I think he was here for the consent item.
Oh, okay, excellent, I apologize then, so we can proceed with our staff presentation, thank you.
Yeah, good evening Commissioners, my name is Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the city, and we are here tonight to consider the subdivision, seventeen lots, single-family subdivision that will be located at 730 and 748 Minor Road. The project is being processed under the Housing Accountability Act, and the applicant is providing an affordable unit there for, this project also includes the density bonus. The developer, Andy Bide, and his team are here tonight, as am I, to answer any questions that you may have after this presentation. It's not working. Clicker's not working, sorry. Let's start with the project site. The three lots that total two acres in size will be merged to create seventeen single-family lots. The surrounding area consists of single-family homes that are zoned residential, R10. Across Minor Road to the north are the Bart Tracks and properties that are located in the city of Concord's jurisdiction. Here are the images of the existing site. Access to the site is gained from Minor Road, and the site is vegetated with several trees, all of which will be removed for project construction. And the two existing homes and the accessory structures that are on-site will be demolished, and both of the homes were owner-occupied. The applicant is proposing a seventeen-lot, single-family subdivision. Each of the homes will have a two-car garage, meeting the city's parking requirements, and the project also consists of frontage improvements, tree removals, and work within the drip line of several, several neighboring trees, and new landscaping for the site. The applicant, the application is being reviewed under the Housing Accountability Act, and it is a density bonus project where one of the homes will be restricted for a very low-income household, and the applicant is also requesting waivers and reductions from the city's development standards under the state's density bonus law, which we will go over in more detail a little later in this presentation. And just a little background, on September 21st of 2022, the DRC reviewed this project. The DRC and members of the public expressed concerns with the proposed density and also the site layout. The Commission did note that the requested waivers to construct the seventeen homes on-site would result in a tight site layout. However, DRC also did acknowledge that their review is limited due to this project being processed under state law. DRC also requested the applicants to add more trees, increase the height of the perimeter fencing, and also reduce the size of the homes to allow for more separation between each home. Though it's not required by the objective, city's subjective design standards, the applicant did revise the plans to increase the height of the perimeter fencing to seven feet to address some of the privacy concerns that were raised by the neighbors, and also added additional trees along the street frontage, and more lush landscaping in the bioretention basins. The applicant did choose not to reduce the size of their homes, citing that it would impact the feasibility of this development, and under state law, the city cannot enforce or require the applicant to reduce the size unless it's tied to health or safety impacts. So tonight, Planning Commission is tasked at reviewing the major subdivision for the creation of the seventeen new lots. The project also requires Planning Commission approval of the density bonus, the waivers and the concession, and also the tree-associated requests. The, if the project is approved tonight, it will then return to the Design Review Commission for a final design review of the home and also the landscape designs for each lot. The project was determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Class 32 infill exemption, as this project is consistent with the policies of the general plan and the R10 zoning district with the waivers that are authorized under the state's density bonus law. The site is less than five acres and is surrounded by urban uses consisting of existing single-family homes. The project has no value as a habitat for endangered plant or animal species, as that was outlined in the Biological Resources Report that was included as Attachment 9 of your packet tonight. And the project will not generate any significant effects related to traffic, noise, or air quality, and the site is currently served by all existing utilities. And as mentioned earlier, the project is being processed under the Housing Accountability Act, also known as SB 330, which does dictate that a city cannot deny or lower the density of a housing project that complies with all of the city's development standards unless it's found that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety. SB 330 also locks in the city's codes and development standards in place at the time of the application submittal, and under the Housing Accountability Act, the city cannot impose new or revised standards beyond what was, when the application was submitted. Staff did review the project against all of the city's object, objective standards, the zoning ordinance, as well as the design standards of the city, and has found that the project is in compliance and is therefore covered under the Housing Accountability Act. And the other state law that is part of this project is the density bonus. Since the applicant is providing an affordable unit, the project automatically receives the density bonus and waivers, and also one concession under the state's density bonus law. Concessions are exemptions from the local standards that would result in identifiable cost reductions for this project. The density range for this project is 3.1 to six dwelling units per net acre. The net acreage for the site is 1.75 acres. However, the applicant is using their one concession under state law to calculate the base density using the gross acreage, which is 2.03 acres. And that does translate to a base density of thirteen units for this project. And since the applicant is providing an affordable unit at eight percent, the project gets a 27.5 percent density bonus increase, which is four additional units, for a total of seventeen units for this project. The applicant did state that the concession would result in cost reductions for the project as by increasing the number of units. By increasing number, units, it spreads the cost, the fixed costs of a project over a larger number of homes, which does reduce the per-home cost. I would also like to highlight that the city is required to waive or allow the concession request unless it could make specific findings that the concession would result in adverse impacts to public health and safety. Staff did analyze the concession request and consulted with the city attorney's office. The city attorney did confirm the validity of this concession, as the intent of the state law is to encourage more housing, and speaks in favor of producing the maximum number of housing units, as long as the project does not result in any health or safety impacts. And under the state's density bonus law, the applicant can request unlimited waivers and reductions to allow relief from the development standards that would physically prevent the proposed housing development. Here is a summary of the sixteen requested waivers. The table was also included as part of your staff report, and this project is essentially creating smaller lots with reduced setbacks, reduced street standards, and so forth, as you see on this list. But even with all the reduced waivers or the development standards, the project does continue to comply with safety requirements. The proposed development dimensions do vary for each lot. Staff analyzed the waivers and has not found that it would result in safety impacts, and the properties on-site are not historic, and nothing in the project conflicts with state or federal law. Additional justification for the waivers and the concession was provided by the applicant, and that is included as Attachment 7 of your packet. So, given all of that context, I will now go into the plans. The proposed development includes a new private street stemming from Minor Road, providing access to all seventeen new homes. The tentative map includes 12,000 square feet of frontage improvements along Minor Road, which consists of a five-foot-wide sidewalk to match the existing frontage to the northeast of the property, and new streetlights, and also undergrounding of existing utilities. Five new streetlight poles will also be installed within the new development, and stormwater runoff basins, also known as the bioretention basins, will be located along the project frontage. A homeowners association will maintain the private street, the new streetlights, and also the proposed bioretention basins. The site has been designed to allow for circulation of garbage trucks, and it was reviewed by Republic Services. And the Contra Costa Fire District also reviewed the plans to ensure compliance with requirements related to fire and life safety, and the fire department did state that even with the reduced street standards, access and turnaround, as shown on the plans, does comply with their requirements. And just to quickly go over the home designs, the home includes three different floor plan types indicated as Plan 1, 2, and 3, and each of these plan types is color-coded on this exhibit. There are three elevation design styles for each home, which will be spread across the seventeen homes. Actually, there's four elevation styles. And each home is two stories with a two-car garage and range in size from 2,300 to 2,500 square feet. The homes are three bedrooms, and Plan 4 also includes four-bedroom homes. Project also meets the height requirements of the single-family zone, and the home designs comply with the city's design standards as all of the homes and the elevation styles And the project also requires the removal of twenty-six trees. Of these sixteen are classified as highly protected trees due to their native species, and under the authority of the Public Works Director and as authorized by the Tree Preservation Ordinance, the city arborist administratively approved twenty-one of these twenty-six trees based on their current health, which was, I believe, most of the trees were in poor health and some were in fair, fair-to-poor health. However, the arborist could not approve the removal of the five trees that I have circled green on this exhibit, of which four are valley oak trees, and one is a Modesto ash tree, and they were all determined to be in fair-to-good health, and their removal does, for that reason, require Planning Commission's approval. And per the Tree Preservation Ordinance, the in-loof fee is the total value of the sixteen highly protected trees that are being removed as part of this project, and that shall be paid to the city in the amount of $158,650. And this fee will be used by the city for the installation of trees or replacement of trees in city parks or other open space areas. The project will also encroach within the drip line of thirteen neighboring trees. These are located along the west and south property lines, and these trees will be preserved with tree protection fencing during construction, and this is stated in the arborist report and will be included as a condition as part of this project. And to offset the loss of the trees, a total of forty-four 24-inch box-sized trees and a mix of five-gallon shrubs is also proposed as part of this project. Of the forty-four trees, six trees will be installed along the project frontage, and the rest of the trees will be scattered throughout the development. And in order to approve a subdivision, the project needs to comply with the two findings that are listed here. The project supports the policies of the general plan, as it provides housing opportunities and also redevelopment of an underutilized site, and it is consistent with the regulations of the single-family residential district with the waivers and concession that is authorized under state law. The project also complies with all of the city's objective design standards and the subdivision map act, and the project has been designed to provide for natural heating and cooling opportunities, as the homes include operable windows on all elevations for the flow of sunlight and air. Additionally, the landscape plan does include forty-four new trees that will be planted throughout the development. The existing neighboring trees and the new trees on-site will continue to provide shade within, within this development. And the project will be constructed in compliance with Title 24, and will meet all applicable building code standards to provide for the heating and cooling systems. And with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve the proposed seventeen-lot, single-family subdivision, along with the density bonus request, waivers, and the tree, tree-associated requests. And for the record, staff did receive one letter expressing concerns with this project, which was included as Attachment 10 of your packet, and also received one letter in support, and copies of that support letter were provided to each of you tonight. That is all I have for my presentation, but I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, that was very detailed and informative, much appreciated. Do we have any Commissioner questions at this time? All right, we'll start with Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I'll apologize, I'm going to do some math for you. The, the site is 2.03 acres.
Correct.
So if the maximum density is six per acre, you figure that out, that comes to about 12.1 units.
And we, and under state law, you round up.
Okay, I was going to ask you, because most of the jurisdictions I'm familiar with round down.
Sorry, I should have clarified that, I think I said that in the staff report, though.
Okay, so you round up. Then there's a 27.5 percent density bonus. If you apply that to the 12-point- If you apply that to the 12.1, you get less than 16 units. If you apply it to the already rounded-up 13, you get 16 and 1/4. And that's also by state law rounded up.
Correct. It's always rounded up under state law.
Okay. Yeah, so the, oh, the other thing I wanted to ask, the, I saw, first of all, that one concession was allowed. And look at that one, then I saw 16 waivers. I'm thinking, wait a minute, I thought it was just one. Concession and waiver sound a bit similar. Can you?
Yeah, of course, I could go over it, yeah.
What's the difference there?
Concessions are basically exemptions from the local standards that result in cost reductions for the project. So the waiver, the concession that they're asking for has to have identifiable cost reductions and not just like a setback, you know, a reduced setback is not going to affect the cost of the project. Whereas waivers, under state law, a project that provides affordable housing gets an unlimited number of waivers. So here, they're asking for 16, they could actually have more. So a waiver is, it gives relief from the development standards, such as, in this case, the setbacks, the lot size, right, the lot coverage and so forth. And it's standards that prevent the feasibility of the development on-site. So if they were to meet the setbacks, the standard setbacks, the standard lot size, they would not be able to develop 17 units on-site.
Now, when I look at the waivers, they, they were not reducing the standards, you know, to kind of fit something in. They were dramatically reducing the standards from, by 65, 75%. In one case, I think more than 80%. So can we just kind of characterize this as basically doing away with the standards? I mean, it doesn't seem, is there any limit to how much you can go?
Yeah. Unfortunately, the way state law is, and again, I could have the city attorney.
Yeah, I would agree with that statement from the standpoint that, you know, development standards can be waived to the extent required to achieve the density that's been approved through the density bonus law.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Strongman?
Thank you for a detailed presentation. I just have, I'll start with my easy questions first. The bio-retention basins, how will they handle seven inches of rain in one day?
Great question. We have the project's civil engineer here, so maybe I will defer that question to the engineer.
Okay.
I don't have the response for this question.
Okay, okay. Next question, will guests be parking?
Parking, yeah. So this project requires two covered parking stalls per home. They are providing 34, so for the 17 homes, it meets the parking requirement. And actually, under state law and for density bonus projects, they could get a reduction in parking and the parking rate could be, I believe, 1.5 per stall. It would result in like 25 parking stalls for this project that the applicant could get, but they are providing the standard parking that would be required for single-family homes, so two for each home.
So if you have a party there parking on Minert Road? Okay. Will there be any EV wiring in the garages so that once we start everybody buying EVs?
That information was not provided in the plans and that's, I think, more for like when the construction plans are submitted. But the developer is here tonight, so maybe they could elaborate on that.
And the rest of my questions are about noise.
Okay.
In disclosure, I live about 213 feet from the center line of the BART tracks myself, so I'm very familiar with what BART sounds like at all hours of the day and night. When they did the study, which was in January of last year, I believe, if I get my data, that's when BART, we were still in the pandemic, BART was lower number of trains, lower, less frequency, even, I think they stopped at 11 o'clock and then start about almost 6:00 in the morning, which is not pre-pandemic level of noise. And did they take that into account when they did the report?
I, the, the letter is dated August 31st, 2022, but I think if, I, the details of when they were on-site, we.
I, I believe the applicant has brought their acoustical engineer with them tonight, so they'll be able to answer that question. And I would also add that as part of the general plan update, actually, way back in, I think it was 2004, there was a noise study done at an almost identical site, just a little further to the east on Minert. And the results of that, in terms of the noise, the noise levels were in keeping with the results of what the applicant provided us here for this project.
Okay. Looking at the actual noise report and the potential of adding soundproofing to the projects, it seems to ignore the other sides, whereas I know you could hear BART coming and going. And the sound doesn't, the back houses will be hearing it in the back bedrooms. Is there any thought of increasing the amount of soundproofing?
So we will have the consultant that prepared the noise study answer that question.
My questions for you then.
Thanks.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, on the reduction in size of the homes, you said we could not require that because it's not part of our objective standards, is that?
Correct, yeah. There's nothing in the objective standards that limits the size of the home that they're proposing. Typically, under a design review, you could get a 4,500 or larger square foot home. And, I'm sorry, can you repeat the?
Yeah, is it, because we don't have anything regarding size of home relative to lot size in our objective standards, we can't require that, right?
Correct.
You can't require them to reduce size.
What that would end up doing is if you're asking them to reduce the footprints of the home, it's basically getting rid of some of those waivers that they're requesting. And if we're, under state law, if, if we're denying a waiver so they could get, make the home smaller and get more setback, we would have to make findings. The burden of proof would be on the city as to why you believe that this would be a health or safety impact, why the waivers are being denied to reduce the home, size of the homes. And I could have the city attorney elaborate.
Yeah, I would say Commissioner Pickett, there, there's evolving case law, which effectively says that the city is required to, to evaluate the project as designed, meaning it's not under the purview of the, of the commission or the council to sort of ask the developer to redesign the project or in your example, reduce square footage in order to meet the development standards in lieu of asking for the waivers.
Okay, so how, how do the objective standards weigh into that? We, we are allowed to require a developer to comply with certain level of objective standards, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we, this is looking forward, not just tonight, but if we incorporated an objective standard that dealt with the size of the homes relative to the lot, that could have effect on future projects, correct?
That could, although I would say that, that, that type of standard is also something that under California Density Bonus Law, a developer would be able to come in and request waivers from that type of standard, if that makes sense.
I'm just trying to make the hill higher. Okay. And, and explain, one of the two of you, explain the level at which we have to go to assert that, that the project causes a health or safety, safety issue.
Right. I would say generally, you'd have to make a specific finding as to, you know, whichever waiver you are stating you don't want to grant because it causes a specific health or safety issue. I would say the burden of the, of the burden of proof is on the city, not the developer. And if there were a dispute, you know, playing that forward, if there were litigation, there are attorney's fees, provisions, et cetera, to, to protect developers in that instance. So it, the, the burden's on the city to demonstrate that.
Okay. The tree mitigation fee, $158,000, that is applicable or can be used to plant trees anywhere in the city, correct? It's not zoned and it doesn't have to be trees in this vicinity or anything, it could be.
That is correct.
South Walnut Creek where money goes, even though the project.
Anywhere in the city limits, correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, you know, this is something that's always strikes me, the, the projects, it's, you say it provides natural heating and cooling. You know, it's really a long stretch to say that it provides for any natural heating or cooling, just because you can open a window doesn't mean you, I mean, how do we justify that? That provision?
I, I can speak a little bit to that. So that, that is, the language there you're referring to is in the state's Subdivision Map Act. And that particular language, that actually comes from Governor Jerry Brown's first reign as governor, and, when it was added in the 70s. And I will say that it, that the, the law does not go into a great level of detail to that end. Basically, as it's been applied over the decades since, is generally, it is kind of something as simple as can you open the windows? Is it possible to have solar, things of that nature? And so particularly for single-family detached homes, I would posit that it's very difficult to make a finding to the contrary.
Just historically, we used to have to orient homes on a lot so they faced a certain direction. It just, densities don't let us do that anymore. So it's kind of a moot statement, but we'll deal with that in the future, too. Last question is, we talked about guest parking. Is parking allowed on Minert Road?
The public parking, yes. These are installing a new site.
The whole curb frontage of Minert is available.
Public parking.
Parking. And there's no time limit on that parking, correct?
Correct.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Early Zach?
So I think I'm going to pile a little deeper onto all the great comments by the other commissioners here. I'd like to start with maybe the Housing Accountability Act. You're, you're looking over at our esteemed Assistant City Attorney. So the question here, and maybe this relates a little bit to the letter of support that was written by the YIMBY Law Group. If it's a Housing Accountability Act application, then what are the criteria that makes this particular project subject to or applicable to the Housing Accountability Act? I suppose, you know, maybe at a higher level, I'm saying, what is the Housing Accountability Act? What is it exactly that causes this project to be subject to it? And in what way does it being subject to the Housing Accountability Act, in what way does that affect our ability as commissioners to make decisions relative to this project? I.e., my understanding is that there's, as a discretionary decision we're making today, we really have very little or no discretion under a Housing Accountability Act. So we can not like all of these waivers all we want, but under, the community can not like this all they want, but under the Housing Accountability Act, I get the impression that we can't deny this project. Could you speak to that for me?
Sure. I would, I would say generally, under the Housing Accountability Act, it, it's subject to the Housing Accountability Act because the project contains very low, proposed very low-income housing. So because that low-income housing is proposed as part of the project, the city can't deny the project or the city can't condition the project in a manner that would, would preclude the applicant from achieving the densities that are allowed as designed and under state density bonus law.
So are you then sort of supporting my, my statement that is that we really don't have a lot of flexibility here, right? We, unless, unless we could make some finding, I guess.
Right.
This is sort of to Commissioner Pickett's comment, unless we can find something that's a public health or safety concern that we can justify, we, under state law, are required to, to approve the project.
That's a, that's a correct statement.
Okay, so I'm going to then move into the density bonus law. And I think everybody's kind of, we've talked a little bit about this. So I, I think that, you know, the idea of using a concession to use the gross density instead of the net density, I've not seen or heard of that before, but you know, the comment about how it rolling up twice increases the density, it would be my understanding that there's, you know, nothing from a planning perspective that precludes that. So that, that that would then be legitimate under the second state law, the density bonus law. And then, as you guys have described, that based on having one affordable housing unit, which 10% affordable housing is required by the city anyway, but just one very low affordable housing unit gets them all of these waivers, which I think we've determined that we really don't, can't speak to much. The one in here that struck me as being a little off to me, and then maybe I'm really looking for some guidance on, has to do with the bio-retention cells. So bio-retention, the city has a relationship with the, the State Water Board and has some kind of a general permit, and maybe the city's engineering staff can speak to this. But it's my understanding that this isn't just like a city, you know, a city ordinance or a city design guideline that we're asking a waiver from. This is a state permit that the city has a requirement through its permit with the state to meet certain conditions. So the city, on behalf of that permit, is reviewing and having to make some finding to that degree. And then I've got to believe that these basins, in order for them to discharge into the city's system, have to have some private agreement for the homeowners' association to manage and maintain. So I guess my question is, has the city looked at this and determined that what they're proposing is, is safe and healthy? If it is, then I don't see that we could deny that waiver. But I'm just trying to understand, to me, that's a, a little bit more of a reach than a city design guideline where we're shifting setback five feet or something. This is, this is to do with our, you know, state water board permit. Do we have anybody who can answer?
We do actually have Kathleen Tarentio from our Public Works Department Engineering Division, who is approaching the microphone shortly, who will be able to speak to that. And, and just to frame the question I believe you're asking, there's the, is what they're doing a safety issue? And is it still compliant with whatever applicable state?
Yeah, is it, is it consistent with our permit? I mean, this, the city has a permit with the state. And then presumably, the homeowners' association, the property owner, then the homeowners' association would have some agreement with the city. And I'm just trying to make sure that what they're proposing, this is just a new one on me, and I just want to make sure that we've, we've looked at this.
So I'm Kathleen Tarentio, Senior Engineer in Engineering Department. Yeah, we definitely looked at this and it complies with our state permit with the water board. Basically, it complies with their permit. In addition, the city has enacted their own standards for bio-retention basins, in part to try to avoid poor design of them. I know you're all familiar with the Orchard's project, where the basins were really deep. They didn't necessarily need to be that deep. That was when, you know, this stormwater treatment facilities first came out. So we developed our own standards that are in compliance with the state permit that try and limit the depth of them, because many times they don't need to be nearly as deep as you see. And so it's partly for safety, partly for aesthetic. In this case, they would like them to be deeper so that they can provide the necessary stormwater detention. So it still complies with the state law.
So from your perspective, it's a perfectly safe and.
Yeah.
Healthy way to, to design this? It's slightly different from some city standard that we created, but there's, it's, doesn't deviate in any way from the state permit.
It's still going to comply with the permit. We'll still have the operation and maintenance agreement between the city and the HOA for them to maintain them, the city to inspect them, we'll still have all of that.
Okay, thank you. And then my last one will be about the, the arbors report and the, the tree mitigation. So, you know, Valley Oak trees, I think are very special to all of us in Walnut Creek. You know, highly protected trees are not something that, you know, we should just check the box and, and mitigate lightly. I'm sure the developer probably looked at this very closely and tried to analyze how they could protect and keep these trees. But my, my question really is, is there flexibility within the discretion of the Planning Commission in this case to, if we, let's say that we don't deny the tree. in this case to, if we, let's say that we don't deny the tree removal permit, because denying it would be an issue with all these state laws we just talked about. But let's say that we felt like the tree mitigation ratio should be different from that. Or that we felt like the reimbursement amount that is being proposed by the Arboris wasn't sufficient. What kind of latitude does the Planning Commission have to review and make the, I mean, I would have to believe that this isn't subject to all these other state laws. It's a discretionary permit, and as long as we made a reasonable judgment that could be defined by, you know, some, some set of reasonable guidelines, we should be able to modify that particular amount or that ratio. Is that reasonable?
Okay, so speaking, so you're not speaking about, you're only speaking with regards to the dollar amount of the in-loof fee, correct?
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, it's more of a mitigation ratio item, but sure. I mean, however, however you do that math, I'm suggesting that we recognize that in order for the project to be built under this density in this particular site, the trees need to be removed.
Okay.
And so if we wanted to do something different in terms of what that mitigation ratio or in-loof fee would be, how much flexibility is there?
Okay, so one of the key factors in terms of what the limits of the city's review are is under the Housing Accountability Act of 2019, also known as S B 330 from that same year, which requires the city to review a project by objective standards. And in the case of this, with the, with regard to the tree mitigation, that fee is established actually by the city's municipal code. It's objective just by that matter. And so to deviate from that amount, I believe, and I would defer to the city attorney on this, but we would be getting into the realm, or we would be leaving the realm of an objective standard and coming up with a discretionary, new discretionary standard, if you will. And also, there becomes then the issue of, and this would be under the density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act, of whether or not we would be rendering the project infeasible due to increase in the cost related to the fees. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that, I agree with Andy, the only thing I would add to that is, changing that amount would also be inconsistent with how that ordinance has been applied in the past across other projects. And so that in and of itself could become an issue. Under, you know, Housing Accountability Act or density bonus law, there's an argument to say, look, if you're applying this ordinance, if you're using an evaluative criteria or a mitigation criteria that's different than that that you have kind of consistently used in the past, that would create some issues.
Okay, well, that I understand, and so we really don't have any flexibility with respect to that. And if we deny the tree removal permit, then the project can't be built, and we'd be subject to possible lawsuit, subject to that. So what are we doing here tonight?
And I would add that-
Great question.
I would add that denial of that permit would be appealable to the city council first, just from a procedural standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. And I think my fellow commissioners have asked a lot of really good questions, so I have no further questions. Thank you for the excellent presentation. And now we're gonna open the public hearing, and the applicant will have 15 minutes for their presentation.
Oh, okay. That's all right. It never happens, huh?
I would ask our AV person, Matt Bolner, if he might come out to help. There we go.
Right here, that one? And is your file loaded already? I think so, yeah. Where is the screen? What happened?
I did nothing.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, it's on, you have the file?
Yeah, it's already saved on the-
On this computer?
Yeah.
No. No. I can, we can, we can use, we can, we can use yours, it's fine. It was working a minute ago, wasn't it? That happened during probably the council photos.
Why don't we take a short recess here while we-
Yes, yeah, a five-minute recess.
Say five, 10 minutes, 10 minutes? 10 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I think we're, we've resolved our technical difficulty, and we'll reopen our public hearing, and the applicant will now have 15 minutes for their presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Vice Chair Ward and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Andy Bied. I'm with Caliber Ventures. We're the developers for this, this project here at 730 and 740 Minor Road. I won't get into too much of the details on density bonus and other things like that. Simmer did, I think, a great job summarizing all that material. We'll just kind of give you kind of a brief overview of the project that is, as it evolved and kind of our whole design concept, what we're trying to accomplish on this project. And just, just for the benefit of the commission, just want to articulate some of the consultant team that's here, of Andrew Duarte from DK. He can answer any questions regarding civil engineering. I've got Will Green from Ripley, he was a landscape architect on the project. Robert Lee from W H A, he'll give a brief presentation on kind of the architecture and some of the site plan concepts that we came up with. And then finally, I have Lisa Nels from Wilson Eric. She's the noise and vibration consultant who did the testing and came up with the construction recommendations on, on the enhancement for noise mitigation. Just as, as kind of Simmer had pointed out, the project is, the site is roughly a little over two acres in size. It's almost exactly 300 by 300. So it's almost a perfect square, which, which is very unusual to find. The site's essentially flat. I think it has a less than 1% slope from back to front. So it was a really interesting kind of design challenge. And obviously, as, as Simmer and the city attorney had mentioned, and obviously you, sitting in your position, are well aware, right, that the state over the last five to six years has dramatically changed the landscape relating to local control, local zoning, and how, you know, general plan zoning kind of dictate and regulate the housing development. You know, the state has come in and said, there's not enough housing construction going on, and it's essentially upended what has, what has been traditional zoning requirements. So kind of given, given that, more of a blank slate, quite honestly, from the development community perspective, in order to provide something that is detached, something that provides housing for families, growing families, something that has some, some small rear yard, usable yards, something that has a garage, two-car garage, conventional side-by-side garage to park in. And especially given the site's location, it's, you know, just over, just over a mile to Bart, we felt like it was a real appropriate site to develop a denser product, albeit single-family. You know, if we had included additional units, we could have had, you know, some additional density. The way the math worked out, as, as one of the commissioners had mentioned, you know, it hit all the different rounding opportunities for us, and that enabled us to get to the 17 units. Just, and again, just kind of a brief overview, the total, and just, you know, I won't highlight all these items because they were covered in the staff report, but the total parking on the project's 59 spaces. And that's broken down with 34 garage, 17 driveway spaces. So a third, a little over a third of the units do have conventional 18-foot driveway abrins where two cars can park, plus the, obviously, the spaces in the garage. Kind of along that main road, entering the project, there's three guest spaces. And then the way that the frontage improvements work, because it's a significant frontage improvement, really expands the width of Minor Road. There's just, just along the project frontage, there's an additional potential for 10. And then as staff has mentioned, we will do an HOA to own, own and maintain all the streets, provide maintenance, any of the internal storm drain systems, plus the big one, the biofiltration basin. You know, as, as, as was mentioned, as kind of the design concept, the project is really laid out in, with these four courts, along with a main street entrance. And all the courts, all the radiuses in the courts have been designed to meet the large fire truck turning radiuses, which in turn allow all the smaller vehicles, like garbage trucks, delivery trucks, Amazon trucks, obviously, to make all those turns. The internal street is a 28-foot wide street with sidewalk on, sidewalk on one side. There's been, we've, you know, our company's designed and built numerous projects with that 28 and 5. It kind of works out pretty well. So it, you provide for lower street speeds, but you still get some parking. You still get a little width on there, and the radiuses work much better on all the turns. Kind of on the landscaping, you know, the, obviously, the big design component that we were, that we had the opportunity to do is, is to create, you know, this large biofiltration basin. And obviously, those are challenging because they have all these engineering functions. They have the structural soil, they have gravel, they have all, you know, they have to contain the water, plus filter it. And we've, and I've done this in previous projects, that we really try to utilize those concepts, not just as holes in the ground, and I think- at the orchards or some other, you know, projects in the city, they did not come out great. We really worked with our landscape team to really do a heavily landscaped area because the way, the advantage of the way the site lays out is, right, the low part of the site is at Minor Road, the high part's in the back. So everything obviously has to drain, back to front, towards Minor. So that we had to place the biofiltrations in this location, otherwise it just wouldn't work. Or we'd have to lift the site up even higher than, you know, really, we'd have to lift the site up in order to get it to drain. So we worked, our civil team worked, I think, pretty closely with our landscape team in order to come up with kind of a nice fencing detail. We've got, you know, enhanced biofiltration basin with cobble in the bottom and landscaping, large trees along the frontage, plus a low, open, split-rail fence, kind of outlet, you know, providing, so that folks don't fall in or go in that location. But it's a design concept that's low and visible, so you can see right through it. In addition, it allowed us to set the houses back a little in excess of 40 feet from the back of the new sidewalk on Minor Road. So, you know, those homes are set much further back than I think other homes along Minor Road as that project, as that road has been built out. I'll have Robert Lee just do, just kind of from WHA, just going to give you just a brief overview on the architecture and maybe kind of some of the site planning concepts that we developed on this project.
Hi, Commissioner. My name is Robert Lee with WHA Architects. The project we presented here has three floor plans. I'm sure you've seen it through your package, ranging the square footage of 2,300 square foot to 2,500 square feet, offering three bedrooms to four bedrooms, and with a bedroom downstairs in each plant. So that gives a nice variety of extended families or, you know, growing families, and also spaces for people to have home office space. So over the last couple of years, we noticed the transition of home, how people utilize their home, you know, requiring to stay at home, work from home. And I think we think that's going to be a kind of a permanent or extended opportunity. And we see that the household size needs a little more room spaces to kind of facilitate that. We also offer six different materials, color, material styles. The ones you see here is Plan One with four different styles. And we're coming to this next slide. And they kind of show all four-sided architecture from the front sides and rears. Keep going. Different roof pitches. And this will offer, I think some of the commissioner wonder if they'll provide EV. Every home inside the garages will have a Level 2 charging station or a plug-in area, and will meet the new state building code started January of this year. So they'll have electric water heaters, and they'll have solar systems, and then they'll have EV charging opportunities for the homes. And I think some of the commissioners also brought up noise concerns. Each one of these will have double-pane windows for high energy efficiency and also reduce noise. So these are probably more noise attenuated than any of the older homes you see throughout different parts of the city. Plan Two is slightly a little bit larger, but also offers a bedroom downstairs, has three elevation styles. And as you can see here, it'll be articulated on all sides. So the front sides and rears, the sightings, lap sighting will be brought all the way to the back and to the side. The Spanish style is more of a stucco-oriented, but the details along the windows and the trims, the pot shelving is also carried throughout four sides of the buildings. The more modern Prairie has a little bit, touches a little brick and stonework on it, and then a little more contemporary garage style. And then our last plan is a little bit larger, it's in the 2,500 square feet. It does off, this one plan does offer a full-length driveway. So not only do you have a two-car, but you also have two cars in front of the garages itself. And we offer, I believe, three elevation styles that also carries the detail on all four sides. And then I think Andy already went through the site plan, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
One additional component I wanted to mention as well, that was, that's kind of a function of the architecture, is, you know, on lots four, three, 15, and 14, the front doors of those homes are oriented toward the streets. So I think that, you know, the goal that we had kind of in some of the early design meetings was to create kind of a more active street frontage, something where, you know, it wasn't just purely garages along that main entrance. So while the garages are all turned on the side, the front door entrances all are along the main entrance road. So I think, you know, for us, I think in conclusion, while certainly I can appreciate and understand some of the concerns of the neighbors, and certainly some of the concerns of regarding the number of concessions, I would submit that this is kind of an elegant compromise between what has been traditional conventional single-family zoning and the desire from the state in relationship to the arena numbers, plus all the new HAA density bonus, and all the housing legislation that's come down to encourage more housing. While we, you know, this is certainly a denser product than the surrounding neighborhood. It is still single-family detached. It still provides a little larger square footage. It provides more conventional living. And it's, I submit, it's a good mix between, you know, kind of the older style, single-family homes on large lots, and some of the new urban condo, townhome, higher-density, three-story and up living that we're seeing all over town. So with that, I can conclude our presentation. We have, as I mentioned, we have a consulting team here. I want to just take a brief moment just to thank Simmer and the engineering staff, all their work. I work in a lot of different cities throughout the Bay Area, and I will say, you have a very good staff here, and I always appreciate that about Walnut Creek. Very professional, and just thank you very much for that.
Great. Thank you for that informative addition to the presentation, and I agree, our staff is the best in the Bay Area, no question. So we appreciate that as well. All right. I know we had a bunch of questions, commissioners, and have any remained unanswered? Now is your chance. Commissioner Strongman.
The sound engineer, or noise engineer around here, yeah.
Hello. I'm Lisa Nels with Wilson Eric.
Hi. A couple of questions about your report. You have recommended increased soundproofing or sound mitigation on basically page five and six, I believe, or four and six. Why did you, it looks like you're assuming the sound is only going down Abigail.
So there is a, there's shielding provided by the buildings towards the front of the project, and there's shielding provided by the adjacent neighbors as well. And the focus is to just meet the code requirements, which is an LDN, which is a 24-hour metric basis. So based on the noise surveys that we took, and the propagation or attenuation of noise due to distance, shielding of the other buildings, the focus of the noise attenuation really does need to be towards the front of the project and along that Abigail Road.
When you did the study, we were still in pretty much pandemic mode. Did you take that into account?
We did. We did. We did make sure to go through the general plan to see if they had any, you know, most general plans have noise studies and surveys and information provided in there. So we looked at that. I believe we also have, we had done recent work here in Walnut Creek, close to Bart, and we were able to reference old project data, not too old, within, I think it was a 10-year period, to just make sure that the levels that we were recording were on, you know, a level of magnitude similar to what we had previously recorded in that close distance to a Bart track.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Just to follow up on that, the standard you're aiming at is a single number.
Correct. There are.
Can you, since there'll be, you know, relatively long periods of quieter time, and then a Bart train, okay, is there a maximum?
There is. So it's not a maximum, but it's a, they do, the city of Walnut Creek thankfully has a restriction that says for bedrooms, there's a different number that you have to meet than just for the regular dwelling areas. And so it's 50 LDN in the bedrooms, 55 in all other areas of the dwelling unit. So we are accounting for the bedroom noise, or bedrooms having a higher sensitivity thanks to Walnut Creek's code. And the statewide code is a 45 LDN interior. So there, it's, it is a maximum noise for the bedrooms and the other rooms. It's still on an LDN basis, so it's a little confusing there because LDN is a 24-hour.
That's what I was trying to get at, is the LDN, I mean, it incorporates some adjustment for, you know, occasional much louder noise.
So the LDN takes, actually has a waiting component for the nighttime hours. So it waits the nighttime hours between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM by 10 dB. So it makes those, you have to be, it assumes that you're quieter during those time periods. So, but we interpreted or we took this maximum level to really be an hourly LEQ instead of the, instead of the LDN metric, which is that 24-hour average. So we were taking a one-hour average to assess those noise levels, because that is a more standardized way to look at a maximum.
Right. I'm thinking, you know, you're going to say an hourly, you know, LDN, but during that hour, there are periods of 20 seconds, whatever it is, as the train goes by.
Correct.
Where the decibel level, I'll just use that term, is much higher.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if there's any adjustment, I know there's an adjustment made to the LDN for that, but is there any requirements based on actually the maximum noise level that's going to occur during those 20 seconds over and over again?
So what we typically do, and what we, I believe we did for this project, because of the way that the code ordinance is written, it is using LDN metric, which is that 24-hour metric. What we typically see when there's an identified maximum interior noise level, it is related to number of pass-bys or number of noise events. So that's the methodology that we took to assess this, is we were actually, during our noise study, we can identify those maximum events. And so we were looking at those maximum events, creating those as a kind of an hourly LEQ again, and saying, okay, if we take this maximum, these average of maximum events and apply it that way, that's how we came to our assessment. So we were using a more, a more typical, I won't say standardized, it's a more typical application of assessing the maximum, because maximum does not normally apply to an LDN. So we, but it does still meet the ordinance as written.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? No? Okay.
For Mr. Byd.
Okay. Commissioner Pickett.
Just a couple of quick ones. Did you do any community outreach?
We did, yes. Yeah, we held a, we held a meeting on September 8th with the community to let them know what the project looked like.
Okay. And I noticed on the plans that it appears around the entire perimeter, you've got drainage in the backyards of the house. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we have.
So how do you require maintenance on those? Does the HOA take care of that drain pipe, or do individuals are responsible for it? Or how are you going to guarantee that that drainage is maintained around the perimeter in private yards?
Yeah, we will require the initial maintenance with the homeowner and then have the ability for the HOA to do it in the event the homeowner fails to do it.
So if Lot Two doesn't take care of his drainage, it backs up into everybody else's lots.
Yeah, correct.
Then the HOA would have authority to go into Lot Two's backyard and fix the problem?
Exactly.
Okay. And just for, Simmer, is that something that's a requirement on our, where does that, where do we assure that what we're being told occurs? Not that I don't trust Mr. Byd. I think he's a very honest man. So I've heard. Is there anywhere that we get assurance of that?
Actually, I think I would ask maybe for some assistance from our engineer, see how that is usually looped in with the various permits for construction.
Wouldn't that be in the CCNRs?
Could be. City Review of the CCNRs. That's how Lot jurisdiction is taken there.
Speaking to your question about how we would enforce that or ensure that it would happen, that's where.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're being told that the HOA would have that authority, but does the city verify that before maps are recorded and things?
So we wouldn't verify the maintenance of the backyard drainage unless it was resulting in a problem with the bioretention. The city doesn't inspect the bioretention as required by the state. But we could review the CCNRs to make sure that that language is in there.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if somebody, prior to, if the city reviews the documents they create, so the city's comfortable with the mechanism, because that's a pretty critical thing, both to these new homeowners and surrounding homeowners, that drainage is properly maintained.
Yeah, we could look at the CCNRs.
So I don't know how we.
We can add a condition to the resolution that city staff will review the CCNRs.
Thank you. That's what I think we should do. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank
Okay. Looks like I have no particular questions. So thank you very much for all of this. So now is the time, I think many of you are here for. Does any member of the public wish to provide public comment at this time? I believe we have comment cards that can be filled out for people who are in the chambers. We also have people online.
Yes, Vice Chair Ward, I would ask any members of the public who were here in attendance in person to speak if you wouldn't mind filling out one of the speaker cards. You can just hand them over either before or after you've had a moment to speak, or three minutes to speak, I should say. And also, at this time, I would ask any of the members of the public attending via Zoom. We'll be, of course, hearing from the people in person first, but I would ask members of the public on Zoom wishing to speak if they would press the raise hand button at their convenience to let us know that they will want to be speaking.
Excellent. All right. If there's anybody here in the chambers who'd like to speak, now is your time. Please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Susan Peters. I live at 2340 LaSalle Drive. We've lived in Walnut Creek for 27 years. We're in the property that is directly behind this project. We have a lot that we're concerned about, and I want to urge the city not to approve this and to use the resources, particularly the resources that you have recently brought in by the recent changes, to not approve the waivers. Some of the things that we're concerned about. We do not believe that it is a safe situation for the students and the children that are going to Oak Grove Middle School that are along this street there. We are concerned about the loss of privacy with the buildings towering over our backyards. We're concerned about the amount of housing. We are concerned about the trees and the environmental impact. I have to say, as a public servant who's worked in public schools for over 40 years, I am not a nimby. And the sad thing about all of this divisiveness that's been created is that really, we're being bullied. Do you feel bullied? Because you're being bullied. You're being bullied by a state law that takes away your rights as a commission to guide the future physical development and conservation of the city, based on the geographic, social, economical, economic, and political characteristics of the community? That's what you're charged to do, but you are not being allowed to do that. Why are we in this situation? Because the developer has decided to enrich himself. He has not been concerned about the city or the community. The houses themselves have four-foot backyards. This is not an environment for a family to live in and will increase tragedy in the neighborhood. The driveways are four feet long. Parking has not really been considered. If people have parties, it is not going to be safe. The parking along Minor Road is not going to be safe for the kids. So there are numerous health and safety issues. I don't understand all the environmental issues. I wish I did understand that, but I don't think that this is correct, given the situation that we're in lately with drought and water and all these other things. So I think there are legitimate health and safety issues, and I think that the commission and the neighbors are being bullied. And I deal with this as a school administrator every day, and what does it mean? That one group has perceived power, and so another group chooses not to stand up. So I ask you, will Walnut Creek continue to be a victim to developers? Will Walnut Creek continue not to protect the people that are here? I want to see affordable housing, okay? I went through your affordable housing. I went through your affordable housing plans. Right now, there are forty rental units that are available to people that are that are under sixty-five years old in the city of Walnut Creek, affordable at the lowest level. I guess that's my time. But let me just say, I'm here for affordable housing. I'd like to see what you're doing to diversify the city. I'd like to see how you're serving the service people.
Thank you, Ms. Peters, your time is up. Appreciate your.
It's up, thank you, please fight and please do not approve these waivers.
No question.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me, I have one question for you.
Coming back up, Commissioner has a question for you.
You you mentioned that you think it's a it's a safety issue for children.
Yes.
Can you tell us specifically how?
The students that are walking along Minert Road with all of the additional traffic and additional parking that's going to be created along that space. You have to keep in mind, people are not going to put their cars in their garages. All of those people are not going to, only a few of the houses that's going to even be possible. And there's not parking along this on the long the little streets on Abigail Place. So all those cars are now on Minert Road where children are walking to Oak Grove Middle School. It's it's not a safe environment for that traffic to be added in there. There's no sidewalks.
Are we talking about added traffic? Are we talking about cars parking on Minert Road?
Both, yes, traffic and parking, both. I'm concerned about that, there I don't think that there's adequate plans. Should that parcel be developed? Absolutely, but with fewer pieces, fewer houses.
Okay, I understand.
And more affordable housing.
All right, thank you for your comments and your response, appreciate that. Do we have anybody else in the chambers who'd like to speak?
Commission members, good evening. My name is Mark Peters and I live with Susan Peters. Okay, I I too am not a NIMBY. I want the two-acre parcel behind our home developed. The now vacant house and the unkempt land is an invitation to crime. But my neighbors and I expect that any new homes will be consistent with our existing neighborhood. Now, in the Zoom call with we prospective neighbors that took place last fall, Caliber stated that it was no longer possible to profitably build homes at a density consistent with the current neighborhood, but that's false. Look at the Genova Homes secluded woods project, which is not even half a mile from the new proposed site and has a nearly identical total footprint. That development has not seventeen, but just seven homes on spacious lots consistent with that neighborhood. So either Genova is in the business of losing money or we have been misled. Now, five months ago, the applicant's proposal was presented to the city's D R C, at which time it was unanimously rejected. Why would this commission even consider a proposal so minimally responsive to their own colleagues' concerns with matters of design, of protected trees, increased minor road traffic and loss of privacy? So please do not approve removal of those five large, beautiful, magnificent trees that even the city arborist identified. So let's be clear about what's happening here tonight. This development proposal has nothing whatsoever to do with bringing affordable housing to this community. Rather, in exchange for offering a single-price subsidized home, the developers have cynically exploited the intent of the law to force seventeen homes into a two-acre parcel that's really suitable for eight. Neither, in fact, the new owner of this parcel lives in Oklahoma City. Now, neither the new owner or his enablers from Caliber have expressed any consideration of us and certainly have not expressed any consideration this evening. In fact, judging from the developers' disregard of the city's own D R C, I suspect they really don't care what any member of this commission thinks either. Certainly not one I owed beyond what it will take to get a green light here. In the end, what's happening here today was best described by F. Scott Fitzgerald ninety-eight years ago, and I quote, "They were careless people. They smashed up things and creatures and then retreated back into their money or their vast carelessness or whatever it was that kept them together and let other people clean up the mess they had made." And you know that's from The Great Gatsby, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else in the chambers who would like to speak?
I'm Kevin Lambert, also a resident of Walnut Creek for about twenty-three years. So my biggest concern, well, there's several concerns about the this development, but I think the the one that's most relevant is just safety and really it's the traffic. So talked about the fire department and also Republic Services, that it was okay from their standpoint. But really, there is not much room to turn around within this development. And you think about delivery trucks, garbage trucks, fire trucks. And you think about if someone has a couch delivered or a moving truck, it's only gonna be difficult. I go back and forth on Minert every day to and from work. And there's a lot of traffic there, it's a fairly narrow road. And if you have large trucks backing out of there in the morning with children or people coming home from work, it's a dangerous situation. So I don't think that the safety has been adequately considered in terms of the traffic moving out of this tight space, particularly larger trucks, moving trucks, garbage trucks and and so forth. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. See, we have another person to comment, thank you.
My name is Nancy Pierce and I live on two-three-four-five, two-three-four-five La Salle Drive, one block away from the project. And I think you've heard a lot of the concerns or hopefully read some of the concerns set aside by the legislatures to give developers more freedom. They've set aside safety concerns, environmental concerns, aesthetic concerns and common sense concerns. All set aside in the name of affordable housing, according to a recent Contra Costa Times article, also to help the homeless. We at the meeting that was held last fall by the developers, we were told that sixteen of the houses would go at market value price, which would be over one million. And the other house, the one house that would go by lottery, would probably be six hundred thousand. So I'm not sure how this applies to affordable housing in any way. It doesn't help the affordable housing, the people that need it, and it certainly doesn't help the homeless. The benefit belongs exclusively to the developer. I it's funny, I I I do not consider myself a NIMBY either, not in my neighborhood. We would truly like affordable housing. I think that's a misrepresentation to polarize people that challenge this in any way as NIMBYs. What about smaller houses with actually yard space for families? What about designating houses for for teachers, for young families, for city workers, for service people, first-time buyers? What if what if they were able to live in the city in which they worked or even nearby? What if these houses weren't? Last time we were told they were twenty-six hundred square feet. What if they weren't twenty-six hundred square feet? The most of the houses in the surrounding neighborhood are seventeen and eighteen hundred square feet. How can anyone believe that this is a logical, responsible response to the need for affordable housing? It would be laughable if it wasn't such a travesty. Many of us attended the design review meeting for this proposal several months ago. The committee unanimously rejected the proposal as it stood as totally inappropriate for the amount of land available on these parcels. The proposal has not been significantly changed. One member of the design review committee lamented that night that change would come when new legislators could be elected to reflect the desires, values and creativity of local communities solving these problems. I suggest we can't wait for that. I urge you to reject this proposal and similar misguided ones in the future. Draw attention to the plight of Walnut Creek and all the cities of California by refusing to stand by and watch this happen. Join the other cities and fight this. We don't want a crippled local government, you know, what are you doing here?
Yeah, thank you for your comment, appreciate that. Do we have any other people in the chambers who would like to make a comment at this time?
Good evening, my name is Lynn Doll and I live at twenty-three-fifty La Salle Drive. Stop the dig, stop the build. There is nothing positive about this proposal. And I stated a few things. Number one, killing trees that have existed for hundreds of years. That affects the environment and it's a health risk. Number two, this company did not even, out of courtesy, contact me or my husband before doing an excavation of the root system to our trees and went ahead and cut the roots without us being notified or given permission to do so. This took place before the planning commission approval, as if it was done, as if it was a done deal. That was safety and risk. Rocks were flying over our fence and we just happened to see and hear it. So we went out and we saw what was going on. Number three, displace the this by by cutting these trees down, you displaced the owls, the birds, the wildlife, as discussed discussed in September, the first meeting. They have come back year after year to have their babies and repopulate. This is an environmental problem. Number four, killing all the plants, environmental. Five, using our national our natural resources that are already limited, such as water, electricity, et cetera. That's also environment. Number six, putting more concrete into the ground. It is not recyclable or biodegradable, that's environmental. Number seven, taking away our privacy with two-story houses, butting up against our property line. That's overcrowding, it's intrusion, no privacy. Number eight, overcrowding, health risk. Number nine, damaging the environment, health risk. Ten, producing more garbage that attracts rodents, health risk. Number eleven, adding more traffic to an already congested street, safety issue. Number twelve, endangerment to the schoolchildren coming and going from the school, serious risk of injury. Number thirteen, not being able to look out of your windows or stand in your yards without seeing the two-story house staring back at you. It's a health risk and invasion of privacy.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate that. If you could fill out a comment card, please, that would, oh, you got one, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a comment? Commissioner's secretary, is there? Commission secretary, sorry, I'm losing my ability to speak here.
Oh, no, that's that's mine, I lost mine years ago.
Excellent, we're on the same page then. Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Uh, yes, so far we have four members of the public online with their hands raised. And I would ask if there's anybody else on Zoom who also wishes to speak, please press the raise hand button now. I'll go ahead and start letting the first person in, this is Rob Higby. And I'll just take a moment. Zoom's a wee bit slow on this. Okay, Rob Higby has been let in and here we are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hi, this is Rob Higby, I live at twenty-three-twenty-three La Salle Drive. There are so many issues that I have with this project. I just I'm I'm actually dumbfounded and it's actually in front of the planning commission, given what the design review board stated previously. So I was kind of caught off guard a little bit by this. One, I I ask, why do we have a city government if we're just gonna bow down to what to a flawed, deeply flawed state law and and not maintain the, you know, the standards that we have as a community? I mean, we a lot of us live here, I've been lived here for twenty-five years. And we live here because of the the governance in many cases of the city and how it's how it's balanced between quality of life, open space, you know, safety, you know, the the use of the community and and this, as I listened to the planning commission folks or planning department folks present their case, it sounded like they're not working for me or for the the residents of the city, but they're actually working for the developer because they didn't present any any negative aspects to this project. They just said, this is what the project states, this is what the state law says, and it it meets the criteria of the state law and we don't have any any grounds to reject it. That's not what my city government is supposed to do, that's not what I pay taxes here for. From a safety standpoint, anybody have any of you gone on Minert Road between eight and nine in the morning or three to four or five P M. in in the afternoon? It's not only Oak Grove Middle School, you've got you've got people, parents bringing kids to Bancroft Elementary. You've got kids, parents bringing kids through our neighborhoods to Cronlet and De La Salle and Ignatio Valley. There's it's a it's a lot of traffic, it's difficult to get out of our our neighborhoods at times because of the traffic on that. And now you're gonna add potentially thirty-five, thirty-four more cars and commuters into that and parking and again. I I looked at the driveway into that into the 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 complex and if there's a car parked on one side of that, you really think a fire a a a fire engine is gonna be able to get in there to get to the house on the far corner that's butted up against two others in in time to present prevent that fire from going from the one house to the second and third house? And then they talk about the environmental controls. It's like I if you don't have westward-facing windows, you're not gonna get a breeze. And and about half those houses have no westward-facing windows that are exposed to the air. So I mean, there's so many, there's so many reasons, you know, and then the trees. I mean, you know, five valley oaks, I've got one right next door.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, your time is up, thank you for your comments. Okay, I understand we have more people online who are.
Yes, let me bring in the next person here. Let's see, we'll be bringing in Steve Bond. It seems like Zoom is ignoring me now, let's try this a second time. Just a moment. Okay, I'm gonna try something different. So normally, the way this works is I promote somebody to panelists and then that way they can have their camera on. I can also just hit the allow to talk, the camera will not work. But if they turn on their microphone, we should at least be able to hear them. So I'd ask if Steve Bond, if you can hear us, if you'd turn on your microphone? Let's try that to go for the next person here is Dr. Jean Han Shafir Shafizadeh. And bring him in. Okay, there we are, and ask if he would turn, and the microphone's turned on.
I'm using my husband's account, and so my name is Brenna Shafazada. I've written a letter that is is part of your agenda and I hope that everybody's had a chance to look at it. I heard Caliber speak tonight about having different people come out and look at the safety issues. I wanted to tell you about my own experience. I lived in in a house on Placer Ridge in Walnut Creek previously. And that street also had enough enough room for two cars to pass, but no more. And so when cars were parked along the side, anybody who was going could still do it if they they're right, it does slow down traffic. But as soon as you had a large vehicle, I'm really surprised Republic said they'd do it because what happened to me was that if there if that road looked like there were too many cars parked on the side or they just felt like it was it was difficult, they skipped and didn't give us service. So and we also did have an accident. The one of the delivery trucks was in a hurry and found that it was just too hard for him to. for him to turn around, so he started trying to go backwards and ran into a car. So my own experience is that, is that that is not a comfortable road that they are creating for the neighbors or for the, the residents. The other thing I want to talk about is privacy. I know that's been addressed a lot at this meeting already. I, I would like to encourage them to reconsider leaving the bordering plants. Those bordering plants are truly drought tolerant, they're mature plants, and the mature trees create a better carbon sink than anything else we've got. They can plant new, new plants, but it will be a long time before they are able to capture the carbon that the mature ones can. And it's a false choice to say you have to have one or the other. They can find a way to, to leave them and still build. Reconsider the window orientations, three of those houses along my fence, that's a lot of windows looking in, and I don't have a huge backyard. Or use privacy glass, so there are things that they can do to mitigate it. But the thing I really want to point out, which is in my letter, is that there are other developments. In fact, there's one in Pleasant Hill not far away where they built 32 residents on a similar-sized lot. But they included a design that, that celebrated and encouraged community. They included a pool for the children, a park for the children, they made sure there was plenty of parking. It was, it is, it's there, it's so cleverly designed that I know it's possible to build housing, to build more housing, without sacrificing privacy or community. And the link to that location is in my letter. I hope you'll take a look at it just to see that it's possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. I think we have one more person online.
So actually, it looks like Steve Bond is back in, hand is raised. I'll ask if he would like to turn off his microphone and speak, I'll give him another chance here.
Wonderful. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you for your patience. So I was there in person, our last, our last meeting, and I'm certainly picking up, maybe contrary to some of what's been said, I'm picking up an empath, a level of empathy from the council, and from the council we had previously. And I, you know, NIMBY's been kind of thrown out there. I guess I am one, if I think about it. You know, this is happening everywhere, but it's impacting my peeps and, and us, we live in our kill court. So I was thinking, listening to these things, and, and I heard Andy refer to as a, as a product and not a project. And that's, that's, that's the vibe I'm kind of getting, I'm kind of going Berkeley on you a little bit here, sorry. But that's definitely the feel I'm getting from this. There's not much we could do, and change is inevitable in 100 years from now, you know, this whole neighborhood's going to look different. And there's nothing we can do. But if I am a NIMBY, and if I look at that drawing, and I look at the, I don't know, there's 10-plus houses bordering those two addresses, and I think they're all single-story, or at least the ones I'm aware of. So, as I look across to you folks, council members, if this, if you were one of those 10, how would you feel? We've only got really one option, that's the health and safety, you know, if it's going to get denied or amended, it'll only be, only be through reasons, reasons based on that. So I'm just wondering if the mental health of the neighbors is a qualifying circumstance or reason. So I'll yield my time. And just, just trust wisdom here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One more, I believe?
Yes, we'll be bringing in, whoop, hand just went down. I'm not sure who it was, somebody just lowered their hand. And if they do wish to speak, I would ask that they raise it back up again. Otherwise, oh, here we go. Bring in, bring in Max. I'm guessing probably already had the hand raised and then went to raise it, I've done that myself, and in doing so, unraised it. And it looks like we are having the same problem that we had with Mr. Bond. Let's try just allow to talk. Okay, I do see a microphone, but it's turned off. I would ask Max if you would, there we go, I think we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Max, Max Rangebar, and we are actually, it should be La Salle Drive. We have been in this property for 20 years now. The developer of this project has requested from City of Walnut Creek Planning Commission waivers and concession, the student, the state of California density bonus law, design review, three of remove, removal permit, and, and three encroachment permit. We believe approval and building this project is damaging to the environment and our health and well-being. Uproot, uprooting and cutting trees, which they, they have been with us and our neighbors for generation as long as hundreds of years, and they are essential, these trees are essential to us and contributed, and contributed to our clean air, our well-being, and our livelihood. Ladies and gentlemen, trees absorb CO2 and provide oxygen to our environment for us to breathe and live. It is fundamental to our life and well-being. No other species on our planet can do that. Yet, we are up, we cut, approve, uproot, and kill, and kill them in the name of development. How short-sighted, sad, and detrimental that is. We do not believe it is right to grant waivers and concession to the state law and the waivers that the state, state law has been provided, for which the, the developer requesting, because if the project is in direct violation of the environment, we always believe that the, or the environment overrides and dominates the issues that we have. If you are sick, you cannot go anywhere, you cannot travel. So then we strongly recommend that the commission, planning commission do not approve this project, and let air and clean air come to our neighborhood, which is by this project completion, get dropped, four houses.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comment, we do appreciate that. All right, Andy, do we have anybody else online who wishes to speak?
No, we do not.
Is there anybody else in the chambers who would like to make a comment at this time? All right, seeing no additional speakers, I would ask the applicant if they would like to respond to public comment or provide any additional information.
Well, I'll make some just very brief comments, just regarding a few of the comments. This one specific comment I really want to reply to is the safety comment. Right, I understand a lot of folks have lived there a long time, I lived in that area in excess of almost nine years, so I've walked down Minor Road 1,000 times as well. The current situation is unsafe, absolutely. The current situation where there's no sidewalk, I've picked up my dog to walk along that because I'm scared to death he's going to get run over as I walk along that frontage. With the new situat, with the new frontage improvements that we're proposing, the significantly expanded Minor Road and an actual sidewalk, that will fix the, the safety situation. So there is no safety situation with the proposed design, the existing condition is absolutely dangerous, and, and I'd like to see the whole, all the frontage along Minor get fixed. Somebody mentioned something regarding impacts to, to bird species and other things, I just want to point out, there's a condition of approval, as well as a recommended condition from our biologists, that we do pre-construction surveys prior to any construction, so there will be pre-construction for raptor species and other, other nesting bird species to ensure that there's no impact to them prior to any tree removal. And, and then finally, there was a comment from a caller, Ann, regarding the street width, and they referenced Placer Ridge, which I think is right off Beacon Road, kind of, it's in the unincorporated portion of Walnut Creek on the north side, just, just above Highway 24. That road is like, I don't think it's 20 feet wide, so it's not analogous to the 28-foot wide road here. The, the project that we built just to the north, Cambridge Place, has a 28-foot wide road, I've lived on it for many years, it, it works great, and there's no issues with garbage, two cars can pass and a parking, and a car, parked car can be there. You can't drive 35 on it, but you can comfortably drive 15 to 20 to 25 miles an hour. So that's, yeah, so those are the comments I just want to respond to, and I can answer any questions if they come up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, I'll be closing the public hearing and bringing back to the commission for any comments, questions, or deliberations. If you might have any takers? Commissioner Lezak?
I have a question of staff. If someone had a single-story house adjacent to any one of these other houses, and they wanted to modify their house and make it a two-story house, say they had a 1,700 square foot house and they wanted to make it bigger, could they do that?
Yes.
So, not, there is no right per se or expectation that the houses would be single-story in this location, is, is that a fair assessment?
That is correct. The height limit is 25 feet, two-story maximum. There are some design review considerations that come into play if more than half of the floor area, either more than half or more than 40% of the floor area would be on the second story with an addition. But most, in this neighborhood, the lot sizes usually actually wind up exempting even that requirement, but it's definitely allowed.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess my, my point is a little bit to, while I can understand the concern of everyone who's adjacent to this project, and their concern about having houses that close, two-story houses that close to their backyard, I, I totally understand that. But some of, some of what we're battling here is sort of the expectation of development, you know, what, what, what might be there, what could have been there. And I understand the frustration of the neighborhood because the, under the current city standards, this project as it is, I, you wouldn't have had an expectation that this would be there. So this is designed to meet, you know, the state requirements, and I think we've already covered that pretty well. You know, I'm, I'm not personally of the opinion that, you know, that I'm, that I'm here to make a significant judgment about the, the laws as they are, we didn't create them, and it's, we really, in our position, have no, are really, don't have the flexibility to decide that we don't like them and that we're going to break them. I, I feel like we are stuck in a position where we need to approve the project. There's part of, part of me is, you know, supportive of designing and building new housing, and in some ways, I think that the project design is actually fairly thoughtful for this area. Yeah, it's more density than we would have expected under the current zoning, but I do think it responds to a lot of the development challenges fairly well. The houses are decent-looking, but I completely understand all the concerns of the neighborhood, but that's, you know, this is not a five-story apartment building, you know, with 50 houses or something either, this is relatively compatible with the neighborhood. So even though I don't know that, that we're all in favor of what the state laws are doing to our local ability to make decisions, I don't think that the project's that incompatible. I will just make a plug for Cindy Silva, our current mayor, last year she was the, I believe it was the president of the League of California Cities. And for those that don't know, the League of California Cities is a, an agency or a group of all the, that's sort of a lobbying group that all of the cities belong to within the state of California for the purposes of meeting with folks at the state and trying to, you know, express their concern about these things that are happening at the state to overturn local, you know, local control. And so I think, you know, our city is, has been pretty strong, with strong leadership, has been pushing back against these kinds of laws, but we're not in a position where we can just turn our backs on them and, you know, make a decision that's, breaks the law. So with, with that, I would just say that I'm, I would be in support of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Lezak. Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, I have one question, and then do you want comments now also?
That's what we're doing, comments, questions, or deliberations.
One, one question for staff. What is the price level for the low-income, affordable, very low-income, affordable home? And what is the associated income level that relates to that?
So there's a very low, the, the affordable units for a very low-income household, which is a household with income between 30 and 50% of the area median income, and then ultimately the sale price along with associated ongoing costs, you know, HOA fees and the like are, and this is pursuant to federal law and state law, are generally benchmarked at, at 30% of that income level, the idea...
We know what that number is.
I don't off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, my comments. You know, I, I feel compelled, when we get these type of applications, we're getting a lot of them these days, to make my editorial comments, and this is more of a political issue than a planning issue. And I'm, I'm going to give you some names, don't share pronouncing her last name right, Rebecca Bauer-Kahn, Steve Glazier, and Gavin Newsom are the three elected officials that are part of the responsible for what we're talking about tonight, so remember that when you vote. The, you mentioned, it was mentioned that, you know, we're only getting one affordable housing out of this whole thing. One of the intents of the state law is to encourage house building, not just affordable housing, and those of you who have some economic education know the supply and demand formula, if you build more houses, it's going to make more competitive marketplace out there. So there's a lot of reasoning behind it. Personally, as a Walnut Creek resident and planning commissioner, I find a lot of it offensive, but we have to deal with it. And they are, they are the bully, okay? They are bigger than us, they have a power over us, they can, I don't know if you've been reading in the paper recently, but all the cities have to have a new housing element adopted. If they don't get it done, a lot of cities haven't, they get funds held out of their pockets. So they are the bully, they hold the purse strings over it. So that's, that's my political comments. I, I do think that the, this, I appreciate that Mr. Biden mentioned the widening of Minor Road, the, basically there's a big gap in the sidewalk there, that gap is going to be connected, road's going to be wider, that will dramatically enhance the pedestrian safety along there, and I do drive up and down Minor Road from time to time, and it's, you don't want to go there when school's getting out. But anyhow, I, I think that, that, that issue is resolved. I think the project has done a good job in dealing with, you know, putting high-density development on a small parcel, I do like the architecture, it is going to be an encroachment on your privacy, and again, there's nothing we can do about that, so those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Strongman, any comments?
I will add on to, I attended the same conference as Cindy Silva was, when she was president of the California League of Cities, and your concerns are the same concerns from every city in the state, from Compton to Atherton to all the way to the border. We are being bullied, it's been dictated by the state, and there's very little we can do about it. I will also add to my colleague here that if we did not pass the... I will also add to my colleague here that if we did not pass the housing element in time, anybody could come in and propose anything for that project, and that could be multi-story building. And we'd have no, absolutely no say in it at all. I would, all things considered, it's an okay project if we like the density. I would like to have had a lower density. I would also like to have seen more soundproofing on the project because I know what it is to live next apart. But unfortunately, our hands are tired, and I think we have to support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
So I want to address a couple of questions that were asked by, in the public. Take the easy one first, which is, um, whether, you know, fire trucks, whether we believe that fire trucks can really get in and out of there. It doesn't matter so much what we believe, the fire marshal believes it. Um, and I've dealt with fire marshals in different cities, and, um, believe me, they don't say that lightly. If they don't think their trucks can get in and out the way they should, they'll, they won't allow it. So when I see the fire marshal has, you know, approved it, I'm good with it. A couple of people have already addressed the question of, do I feel bullied? Yeah, of course, of course. Do I feel bullied by the state? Yeah, they're the ones doing the bullying. In fairness to the state, and I know this room probably doesn't want to be too fair to the state, but in fairness to the state, uh, they spent some decades, um, you know, trying persuasion and trying some incentives and some gentle bullying, um, and then they decided that that was not working, and there's pretty good evidence that it wasn't. Walnut Creek's done a pretty good job. A lot of other cities, um, either just by not doing enough or by actively opposing housing, have stood in the way of that. So the state decided enough is enough, and we're going to swing the pendulum, I would say, too far in the other direction. We're going to, we're going to make the cities do what, what we say. Now, in this particular project, kind of illustrates a, a situation that, that I think is unfortunate, which is, based on one affordable unit, they get, which should have been four, but because of rounding, is now five or six, extra units on this parcel. And they're not allowed to just modify the development standards, would basically toss them out. And plus the concession, which means that they get to use the, the gross area and, you know, another couple of units there. So there's more units than, than anyone would like. Unfortunately, you know, the, that one unit gave them a density bonus, uh, gave them the concession, it gave them the waivers. If the state really wanted, of course, they want housing, but they also want affordable housing. If they really want affordable housing, if they're going to allow all of these concessions, and each one of them is valuable, require at least a little more affordable housing. Otherwise, you know, it's, you know, all going to be at the maximum, you know, level that, that they can charge for. And then the related follow-on question that we got was, uh, are we going to bow down to state law? I would rephrase that as, will Walnut Creek comply with state law? You heard several commissioners tonight ask questions about kind of, you know, is there a way to, you know, get something else than what we're presented with? And the fact is that state law, because that pendulum has swung too far in the other direction, doesn't allow that. And so we have a choice. We can comply with state law or not comply with state law. It's not a question of bowing down, it's, they're the state. And, uh, you know, the, the, you know, if we, if we bow down to state law at this point, we'll have the projects that's before us. If we don't, we'll have a much worse situation, you know, including on that site. I will, I will say that, that I am, uh, pretty seriously disappointed that the developer chose the one thing that he would not concede on the things that were asked was house size. Because with the development standards, the way they've been modified or approached, um, you know, every, everything is pushed out to the lot line, everything is as dense as they could possibly make it. There's no variation in the types of houses that are there. Not everybody has, you know, um, a family with, you know, a need for an office and, you know, four children or whatever, that three bedroom homes. It could have been a, at least a few smaller homes, make a little space there. Put a tree not just in the front and on the main drive, put some in a backyard.
Thank you.
Or even leave one in a backyard.
Beautiful tree there.
The, um, so I'm disappointed that they didn't, but they don't have to. That's, that's the way it is. So, so I will support the project because that's what our job is tonight.
Um, thank you. So the disadvantage of going last is that my colleagues have done a very good job of outlining, discussing, and highlighting all the different issues that we've had here, and I think we've all listened very carefully. We've carefully considered the materials that were provided to us, we've very carefully listened to everybody who's provided comment earlier and tonight. I just wanted to say, to underscore that we really do have a dire housing situation here in California generally, and in Walnut Creek specifically, and is a goal, and I think a important goal, to have a community where people can live and work and play and go to school all in the same community, not be driving on our overburdened roads. And in order to do that, we need more housing. I am very philosophically in favor of both infill development and the creation of more housing, and in particular, affordable housing. And, uh, that is important, I think, for our community rather than sprawling out or developing in other ways. And, um, unfortunately, it doesn't always, um, those developments are not where people tend to want them to be, because they always want them to be somewhere else. But today, they're where they are. And, um, I join my colleagues also in objecting to the fact that we have been stripped of much of our, our discretion and authority with regard to the way that we develop projects in our community. But that is, as one of my commissioner, fellow commissioners pointed out, the result of our failure to step up and provide housing on a more consistent basis for the past few decades and to address the problem that has been, now become a real crisis in our community. I, um, I think there's a lot to like about the project. I think we need to be careful not to impose our own personal preferences with regard to what our homes or, uh, living situation should look like on everybody else, just because that's the way we grew up or the way we prefer to live. Different people have different situations, and the more options we provide people, the more diverse and welcoming our community is to all different kinds of people who can come and live here and be our community members, and I think that is important. And, but in the end, as several of us have pointed out, and the staff, I think, has made very clear to us, I don't believe we have any discretion to deny this project under the state laws that are before us and that provide the framework under which we operate. So I too would be in favor of the project. And I think we have no more comment. Oh, one more.
Good thinking.
Okay.
Leave it on a positive note, the lots are too small to add an ADU.
They have garages, my friend. Okay.
Uh, Ms. Vice Chair, if I may, I was able to do a little bit of searching to partially answer Commissioner Pickett's question regarding income. So a household making 50% of the area median income, this would be a household with two members aged 18 or older, uh, that would be $54,800 approximately annual income, annual household income. And as I said before, the, the price of the, the sale price of the house, as I understand it, is gen, unfortunately, we don't have our housing manager here to, who really knows the stuff in and out, but as my understanding is that the, the price of the house is, is essentially based upon an annual housing cost roughly equal to 30% of the household income.
Thank you.
I am going to make the motion, uh, to approve the vesting tentative map subdivision number 9608, state density bonus, tree removal, tree drip line encroachment permit for the residences at Abigail Place, application number Y 22-019, 730 and 748 Minor Road.
I'll second that with, I would like to add the provision on the drainage that I talked about earlier, that there be some mechanism that the staff can review the CCNRs to assure that there's adequate protection for the maintenance of the drainage in the private yards.
I, I accept the, the friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion as amended?
I, I have some language I could read into the record as that condition if-
That would be great.
The commission would like-
Please do.
-do that.
Please.
So, um, I would add the, the following condition. Prior to recordation of a final map, applicant shall provide city planning staff with evidence that an HOA governing the 17 homes has been established and a copy of the HOA's CCNRs so that staff may verify that the CCNRs contain appropriate provisions requiring homeowners and the HOA to maintain all onsite stormwater treatment and drainage facilities.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, that sounds great. So we have a motion and a second. Commission Secretary, can you please record the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Lezak? Yes. Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ward?
Yes.
And the motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, so that, whoops, that concludes our last public hearing of the evening, and I believe our next agenda item is commission considerations. Do we have any of those this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, then moving on to item six, commission member and staff reports or announcements.
Uh, the only thing I have for tonight is it's looking like the next regularly scheduled meeting will be canceled due to lack of items for the agenda, um, other than the annual election of chair and vice chair, and I would presume that this commission would rather not come in for a meeting to do just that. So given that, we'll be looking at, I believe, the following meeting, March 23rd, where we actually already have some stuff lined up. So, but that's all I have.
Uh, great, thank you very much. Um, and with that, we'll adjourn our meeting at 8:22 PM. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.